With that, we will go ahead right into our working board meeting.
Yeah.
Well, here.
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 Mendoza.
Here.
Carsha.
Here.
Um, we do not have any speakers signed up for public comments, so we will go right into our one and only discussion topic around math. So, I turn that over to you.
Thank you. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come and share this information with you. I don't have a formal presentation, though if you want, I can show the charts up on the board, but they are included in the memo that you all received. So, as I had outlined in the memo, we conducted a review of the district's map making gains measure and wanted to bring the results of that review to you all for consideration. NWEA, which is the assessment developer of the math assessment, calculates an estimate of how many RIT points a student is likely to grow based on the student's prior performance and the national database of records that they have. So, over 113 million test incident records, and so they calculate this measure of expected growth for students, or the MEG. And several years ago, the district started a practice of recalculating that making expected gains in an adjusted way. So, we take the making expected gains measure from NWEA, and then we add on to that an expectation that the students' growth exceed both the expected growth based on this national norm data, plus the standard error of both their pre and their post-assessment. So, as a result of that, it sets a much more challenging growth expectation. And what we found when we dug into some of this data is that because the standard error of measure bands remain pretty consistent across students, but the expected growth that students are making really varies by their grade level and their level of performance, we wind up identifying more students and re-categorizing more students in the middle and upper grades as having not made the expected gains using this district measure. And so, I think it's really important for me to note that families and students do not receive any sort of revised measure of whether they made gains. They get what NWEA says, they get the nationally norm data, it's reliable, it's valid. What the families and students see is their individual results. What the making, the district measure of recalculated making expected gains influences is school reporting, aggregate reporting, and that's used in things like the school work planning process and school goal setting, and then we also use it for district reporting. So, it's not reported at individual student levels, nor does it affect any of the attainment measures. So, it doesn't affect our college readiness benchmark data, it does not affect where students fall in the performance, you know, performance quartiles. It really is just this making gains measure that we're making some adjustments to. And, you know, as a result, as I said, because students, when they hit the middle grades, the content gets so much more challenging, it's really harder to show that growth, right? You might have a first grader who might be expected to grow, you know, 10 or 15 RIT points, and then you might have an eighth grader who's only expected to grow two RIT points. And so, we have more and more students in the upper grades who were recalculated as having not made gains, when in fact, they did make gains under the, under the actual measure. And I included some information in the memo. This is not an insignificant impact in our district. There were, in math, 10% of all students were reclassified as having not made gains, and in reading, it was 20% of all students. So, it is definitely something that is influential and something that we should look at very carefully. Because the distribution of who is being re-categorized is not random across all kids, not even, it also has the school effect. Because more students in the upper grades are being reclassified as having not made gains, that means our magnet schools and our middle schools were more likely to have the gains that they're making for students be suppressed. And this only serves to suppress students. There were no students whose scores were said, "Oh, you made gains, but you didn't." This only really served to suppress making gains. Additionally, I'd like to note that there's also difference across performance bands. So, students who are in higher performing areas, right, higher performing quartiles, were also more likely to be re-categorized as having not made gains under the district's recalculated measure. Because students who are higher performing, they make smaller growth, because they're already grappling with really challenging material and productive struggle at that point is harder, and so you grow less when you reach higher levels of performance. And so, because we also have racialized assessment results, that means that our white students were more likely to be reclassified as having not made gains, and so their scores were being suppressed. To be clear, like many of our students were reclassified as having not made gains, students of all demographic backgrounds, students of all grade levels, but the likelihood of your score being re-categorized as having not made gains is greater if you were a white student or a student who is higher in the higher performance categories, or a student who's in a middle grade, 670. And so, as a result, you know, in addition to this kind of, these data anomalies that are the result of us re-categorizing and reclassifying students with this calculation, we also have some other unintended consequences that are really difficult for our school communities. So, when teachers and school leaders are analyzing and interpreting their data, they're really looking at a robust individual-level student data profile, where they're taking multiple measures for students and trying to triangulate, okay, we're looking at attendance, we're looking at test results, we're looking at classroom work, and we're really trying to hone in on how our students are doing on multiple measures. And they're doing that heavy lifting. That's a lot of work to really understand and interpret that data. And then, when we recalculate which students are making expected gains, it creates this kind of structural disalignment, where schools and educators are seeing one set of information, and then we come in with a different proportion and a different view around, are you making gains for students? And that creates some cognitive dissonance and confusion, where how do we interpret and understand this data and use it for goal setting and use it for, you know, understanding our long-term performance trends if it doesn't align to the individual students that we're serving. Further, just as it creates confusion for our educators, it could also be creating confusion for our families and people out there in the community. If I'm looking at my own individual child's results, and I see, oh, my child's making gains, but I hear that at the school, they're not making gains, I don't really understand, well, my kid is doing it, but are the other kids, right? And so, it creates a lot of potential complexity that may actually wind up being a barrier to understanding and using data to inform our strategies. So, as a result of this analysis and of conversations we've had with NWEA, which we reached out to them, and they raised the same empirical concerns that we were seeing in the data, and, you know, really kind of advised us against employing this methodology, we would like to make the recommendation that we move away from this recalculating of the measure and focus in on using NWEA's regular making gains measure, which is based on the national norm data and which helps us really leverage the existing reports and the systems that are in place in schools, and help us kind of think about that data to scale in a district, in a district way that helps us to better serve our students. So, that's the information I wanted to bring today, and I open it up and welcome your questions and any comments that my colleagues may have regarding this recommendation.
Anybody have any questions?
Um, I, I definitely appreciate the explanation of the, the dissonance in the district-level data versus what's being seen at, by teachers, by families, and I think that's important to acknowledge, that that's creating problems, that I think when this change was adopted was not necessarily thoroughly considered. Do you offhand have information on when the district made this change to add the adjusted measure?
So, I have been trying to pinpoint that, and I will say that it's a little difficult to suss that out with a lot of certainty. The first earliest reporting of it I could find was 2015, but I also received reports from some colleagues that that may have been employed earlier, or that it was being used. I would like to also share that we did a lot of fact-finding, not just quantitative analysis for this, but we did a lot of reaching out to people to understand. We really wanted to get a clear insight into if these measures were used in ways that affected programming for students or decisions about resource allocation, and I can tell you that all of the people we've talked to said, "No." When we were looking at the data, it was really, we were looking at attainment measures and other measures. So, you know, I think that that's important to note as well. So, I think like before 2015-ish, I think it began to, to be employed, and I will say, I think with any kind of data use methodology, it does also take some time for you to identify any potential unintended consequences. And with data evaluation and analysis work, you're always kind of learning iteratively on what practice to employ. And so, at this point, we can see kind of these effects, and we have long-term data where we can look at and really better understand what's going on. And so, given, given where we are now and our, our kind of insights about this now, that's how we understand, that we can, we can move away from this measure and employ another method. And I will also say, in addition to the potential cognitive dissonance and confusion it creates, it's also a resource allocation issue. We, because we are doing this recalculation, there's a delay in the receipt of data to schools, there are, you know, resources that are going into building additional tools that use these measures to running the SAS code that, you know, calculates all of this and cross-checking it, and it's just a lot of effort that we could be reallocating towards, how do we use and interpret the data, how do we use it instructionally in schools? And so, there's another advantage to using the reports and the data that we already have available to us.
So, I think, you know, when this change was happening, and I think the, the conversation around it was that we wanted to put a more challenging, a more challenging measure for students to, to basically push the district on what is expected growth. How can we be, why is then now removing this not necessarily lowering then our expectations of what students should be, what the gains students should be making?
That's a great question. And I think, you know, intent was very thoughtful, and I really understand and can relate to that, but I think that when you're thinking about what data you want to use, you really want to prioritize first and foremost the accuracy of the data. And we want to make sure that when we're building our plans and we're thinking about how we reach all of our students, we're all using the same language, we're all using the same information, and we're all using the best available information. And so, when we make an assumption using the standard error measurement, it basically says, well, we are assuming in every single student's case, in every single one of these incidents, that the student had their best test day ever. We know that's not likely the case, right? There's a plus and a minus on the standard error measure for a reason. Could be really great test day, it could be a really awful test day, we just, there's a band for that. And in aggregate, those, that kind of noise in the data washes out. I think the most important thing that we can do is to use the strongest available data to make instructional decisions that are student-specific and that serve our long-term analysis and our long-term supports. And I think we, we still maintain high expectations for all of our students. This does not alter those expectations, this does not take a step away from those high expectations. This just empowers our educators and our school leaders with the most accurate data available to help inform and support instructional decision-making.
It, what I was gonna say is just to support what Kylie shared, is that it just accelerates the opportunity for teachers, parents, school leaders, and our instructional teams to get that information really readily, rather than to go through this churning process of really understanding what that data, how it's changed. So, it's actually gonna really create a, create a more level playing field, so to speak, for accessing information. One of the good qualities of effective data use, I have a colleague right now who's saying that really, the, the task matters almost less in some ways than the use of the information that comes out of those tasks. And so, what this does is it gives us an opportunity to do that even more clean and, in a way, and I think this was a courageous and helpful research work that was done to really help us understand some opportunities that we were losing out on, really to be much more thoughtful in our use of data.
And I would love to add on to that. Thank you, Andalee, that's great. And I wholeheartedly agree with that. I would also say that this creates another opportunity for us to engage our parents in all of our shared work. You know, as a person who works with data and research, I know the power of partnership with our parents and our families, and when they have the same data that we're working with, and that's what we're using to drive programs and strategies at the schools, and we're engaging them as thought partners in that work, we all want to be on the same page. And so, I think that this will help us to really strengthen and broaden our work to accelerate and set high expectations for our students and to work in partnership with our educators to make sure we are reaching all of our students and helping them all achieve and accelerate growth.
I'd like to add a comment as well, particularly related to your question, Suni. This is not at all lowering the standards or expectations, and if it was, I don't think that the recommendation would be coming to the board, because we know what you're all about. We know that you are about raising expectations for teaching and for learning and about helping ensure that every child has that birthright to college and career readiness, right? And I think we can still easily, possibly more easily accomplish the goal that we all share. Looks like. And what we want to see in every classroom for every child is that children are soaring past that, but then we can legitimately say to parents, they are making greater expected gains for their level of learning, for their grade level, as based on the content that they are teaching, when compared with other students who are their age. And then we really can have that true picture for parents. I'll talk a little bit, if I can have just a couple more sentences on this. I think it also works just as well, not only for students and families, but for educators, because what educators can achieve from having a fair, fairly represented outcome for their students, for each one individually and for their class collectively, is they have the information at their fingertips to be able to know, based on the accurate RIT growth gain, what exactly they need to be teaching tomorrow. We want teachers to be able to look at those areas for reinforcement that are still showing us fragile knowledge, and also those stretch learning goals that can help that cognitive stretch go a little bit further. But that's available based upon the accurate RIT growth gain. That's based on their actual attainment score. And so, the part where it gets a little muddy is that children take this test and it adapts to their learning on that day multiple times per year over a long period of time. So, it's very rare to see someone's growth look like this. It's very common to see someone's growth look like this, where they have highs and they have lows, but what you want to see is that trend data going in the right direction. But for teachers, probably the best feature of this assessment is that they have better ideas of what skills they have to hone in on during their instruction. And that, that's confused by this recalculation. I, I support this recommendation, and I support the work of being able to accurately reflect the learning in, in a way that you would, you could compare it across all of the schools in the United States that are using this assessment, of which are the majority of schools in the United States.
Also, just want to remind folks, so the Illinois State Board of Education is taking comment, public comment and recommendations around rethinking the way we assess students, right? And is there a more expansive way, and not just giving them isolated tests here and there, but really looking at a comprehensive approach to, to state assessment. So, I really appreciate that, you know, again, this aligns to that, to the goal of the state board, where we're really rethinking. And I know Stacy, last year, you know, we were talking about looking at, at our assessment schedules, right? And so, again, this all is, is coming together. And so, I really appreciate the, the hard work you've done in, you know, really researching this and really rethinking the way we assess students. And again, given that this is such a cumbersome issue for, for staff, educators, and families, I mean, I think, you know, the time that's saved, you know, from having to recalculate and make these special calculations, I hope is devoted to, again, really continuing the rethinking of how we assess students and really looking at multiple measures. Again, like you mentioned earlier, chronic absenteeism, you know, what kind of support, you know, I know the board has often talked about what kind of supports kids get to meet their needs that are determined by some of these assessments. So, is there a way that we can look at how, what the support, you know, what supports they get, a reading specialist, math specialist, maybe they get an IEP, and how's that impacting, you know, their outcomes? So, you know, really thinking of looking at an expansive and complete way to really measure children. And I think doing something like this kind of helps, gives us a little bit of time to really rethink the way we, again, holistically assess children across the, across the system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, questions? So, one, thank you for taking the time to do the analysis and bring this to us. It has been, I think, a long-term standing question as to why it takes so long to get data pulled, and also the dissonance between what folks had in terms of their student-level data versus what we poured out for, at the district. So, I appreciate you demystifying that a little bit for all of us. And I think the historical context is important, so getting an idea of the timeline on that, even though we don't have it completely narrowed down, is, is helpful. I just had a couple of questions. I think it will help to clarify for me, and I also think it will help to clarify for our community, if you could tell us a little bit how data trends will look differently with this adjustment.
That is a great and insightful question. Thank you. So, yes, data will look different. So, what we'll do is we'll report out the students who are making, you know, percent of students making expected gains based on the actual expected gains. And what we would anticipate is that you will see increased percents of students who are making expected gains in the middle grades, right? Because previously, we were suppressing that. You will see increases across all student demographic groups in how many students are making gains. So, for example, last year, or in 2018, in reading, 36% of black students made expected gains on the, under the district measure. When we reassess that, it actually goes up to 51% of students. And so, you'll see a lot of these things will be higher. Nothing has changed, except for the fact that we are no longer altering the scores, right?
We're not altering the norms.
That is the, yes, yeah, we're, that is what the students achieved through the support and the learning provided by our educators that is unchanged. And so, when, when I come in the future with district reports, we'll have multiple years of that data available. We'll help sense-make with our, our colleagues out in the schools to understand and unpack that data, and again, like disaggregate it, so people can see those trends over time. So, it will be a change, but we will help facilitate that and assess that. But you will see definitely differences.
Did I hear correctly, are you implying that looking back at data, you will report that?
Yes.
So, we'll be comparing apples to apples?
Yes. I, I, I think it's really essential that we're always looking at data longitudinally. We have the data available, so we will look at it longitudinally to help us get a sense of those trends and to really better understand. So, yes, we will go back and be re-providing, not just for, you know, last academic school year, but the prior years as well.
So, we won't be looking at suppressed making expected gains versus actual, we'll be looking at actual making expected gains numbers for a number of years?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we're gonna clean it up, so it's nice and aligned.
I'm not suggesting that you're being unclear, I just...
Yes, yes, you are perfectly right.
And I had one more question that you have alluded to, but just asking for a more explicit response. Can you posit a racial equity lens to this proposed change?
Yes, that's a good question. Um, well, I think that it's important that we honor all of our students' achievements, and I think that it's critically important that our educators also have the opportunity to be honored for the learning opportunities that they're providing for our students. To me, you have to have the evidence and the data to support where you're going and why and how you're achieving it. And so, having really clear information and the best available, most transparent information to serve our community and to say, "Look, we're being really clear and transparent about where we are and where we are heading and where we need to go for the students we serve." And so, to me, you have to have that kind of orientation in order to pursue racial equity work, because you must know what the landscape is. And then you embark on the hard work of addressing the inherent systematic institutionalized structural elements that contribute to disparities. And so, to me, that's like the first step towards that equity journey. I don't know if that helps, I don't really have a pair of comments, but that's like from my heart, that's what I would say.
I can agree that we can't fix an issue that we're not looking at transparently and honestly. And with that said, I think the data trends, another change, and correct me if I'm wrong, is going to be that the gap in opportunity to achieve, as reported by MAP data and race, is going to increase looking back. That gap will be larger.
It'll be larger than what we have reported with the adjusted. Yes.
Scores.
Yes, it will.
We've been suppressing white students, so the gap is actually more significant.
Yes. Go, growth.
The gap we report will be greater.
The gap in making, the gap in achievement of expected gains will increase, but not necessarily in, I don't know what the other terminology.
Yeah, the college readiness benchmark data and the percent of students who are in the bottom quartile, those measures were unaffected by this methodology. And so that data is accurate, it's consistent, that will not change. We will not see variation there, looking backwards over time or looking forwards. But yes, I will say that we would anticipate that the gap will be wider. And we have to know that. That's important to know. And so we will see that in the data.
I think it's also important to recognize that one of the ways in which that practice was harmful was the reclassification of being able to meet gains. And that classification, when we actually have students who met their target, to be told it wasn't good enough, that is a very harmful practice.
It is very
It's the end.
Yeah, it's a harmful practice. I will just clarify again, students and families were never individually told that they did not make gains. This was strictly an aggregate measure that we reported at the school level and at grade band in tools that school educators and leaders could use to filter, to look at their data. They could not line up anything on an individual level.
Not on an individual level, but they could compare their scores with the scores that the district was utilizing.
That's absolutely accurate. And it led to some, like, stress. And, you know, it's demoralizing to feel like you're making these gains for your students and then to see in a report later on that it doesn't align with what you are looking at on an individual level.
I think just to add to that, an aspect of this was a lack of clarity that educators then had ultimately about the results, which in some cases left educators with a sense of distrust about the data. This one gets the data in front of educators faster in a tool that has other supporting reports to back up the learning, and so gives them deeper information more quickly without the dissonance of different numbers. So the goal is to, one, help educators realize that kids that are below grade level need more than a year's worth of growth, which is language that we already use; and, two, to help them lean into and understand the data to inform teaching and learning more rapidly and to tune interventions that are in place or need to be in place.
I think Maggie had something going to say.
I think I found some information. So ECR, if anybody remembers
Oh, yes.
ECR when they were here, in 2012 and 2013.
Right.
So it's definitely older than 2015.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And I think it was like this propensity score is what they called it. Remember?
I remember that, yes.
Yeah. And so 2012, 2013, with ECR, is the group that brought it.
We changed.
So I just happen to want to find the answer to your question.
Thank you.
But I just want to thank Kylie too, and her group and the team. I think this has created a lot of challenge with educators over the years to get two different pieces of data, and then for buildings to create plans around this different set of data that wasn't quite matching what they saw, that does not take away from the rigor that we know that we are, you know, providing for our students and need to continue to work on providing rigor. So that's not going to change that. And I think, you know, how we take the scores and use it to guide instruction and plan for rigorous instruction, that's not going to stop. I think we have a more accurate tool now that we can use. And so I just want to say thanks again for being open to that accurate, transparent data.
Yeah, I think that is a really good point. And I think another aspect to Anya's equity question of like thinking about from an equity perspective, why this is important to consider, is I'm really compelled by the resource allocation. And I think, you know, you mentioned this, that we have in the past struggled to understand the delay in getting and using data. And so to understand a little bit more about why that's happening, I think is a really, you know, for whatever the initial goals may have been around trying to say, well, we're going to have more rigorous expectations for our students, if that's not actually what's happening. And it's also taking away resources from what our schools, what our educators can be doing with the data and how your department can help them make the most of this data. I think that's a really big, that's a really big loss that we've had over the last several years and something that now can, we can gain back for our students. I think that's a really important, an important equity piece to consider as well in resource allocation.
I had a question, but I also wanted to challenge us to maybe come up with more accurate language. The measure of adjusted expected gains is not necessarily a more rigorous one. It's an inaccurate one.
Correct.
And so I'm not suggesting that you're intentionally using a wrong word, but I just am challenging us to think of what is a more descriptive term, because the, it was creating a nearly impossible goal, manufacturing a nearly impossible goal for children and adults that was not within recommended best practices. And I think we'd be remiss if we called that rigorous.
I think you're absolutely right. So thank you for that clarification.
The other question I had, which I think Stacy, you were alluding to, is how this recommendation is in alignment with our seven priorities for this year? I think that would be useful for us to hear specifically about.
Yeah. So I think, so there are a couple of different things. Some of the, so our priorities around are focused on increasing cognitive rigor and restorative practices, and then also ensuring that we have standards-aligned materials in place in all of our classrooms. The ability, so one, with our revised assessment calendar, we did not do a fall assessment. We leaned into our spring data. We are actually closing our assessment windows this week for MAP, DRA, and STEP. And we are, as we return, part of the reason to do that is to close, to get data and allow educators to have new and fresh data coming back into January, because January through March is a good, strong teaching period. And so we are, one, using the ability to get into the data very quickly to ensure that there are department reviews of data, principal reviews of data, and then educator reviews of data. And we are providing protocols to support individuals in that process. And so we are really trying to ensure that we are digging back into a regular cycle, using protocols to, again, look at that data, understand strengths, strengths and areas for growth, and use that to inform both tier-one instruction, whole-class instruction, as well as small group interventions.
I would also add that one of our other priorities is to ensure that we're using and employing two-way communication. And so this is something that we've heard from our educators. This is something that we've heard from our principals as a source of tension and something that, you know, is creating some of these unintended consequences we mentioned. And so really taking that feedback and using their insight, knowledge, and expertise to help us assess in a fair and neutral way, well, is this practice actually serving our schools and serving our students? And is it doing what we maybe had hoped it was doing? And to really be able to take a step back and look at that and use their insights and contributions to help us ascertain what we want to do as a district. And so I would also say, I think there's a connection there to that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anya, tipple mine.
I just wanted to reiterate our gratitude for that, for finding that, you know, efficiency in the work that you do and the work that our educators do. I think it's most important to honor the amount of time spent and just, you know, being completely confused at what, you know, what it is that they were trying to meet. So thank you so much, Kylie, for your work.
Thank you so much. It is, I have to say, it is not just my work. I have an incredible team in the department who are really amazing data scientists. And we could not do the work that we do in terms of our analysis without folks like Jeanne Hopkins and Juan Trotter and Becca Quick, and my colleagues Stacy Beardsley and Meg Cruley and Anjali Cogati. Like, really, everyone, Heidi and Phil have been incredible resources during this time. It's the shared work of many different perspectives and many different members of the district really helping to contribute to our shared understanding. And so thank you on all of their behalf. It takes a whole community of learners. We also were working with our colleagues at NWEA to talk to them about this methodology and help them, help us to understand the potential unintended consequences and empirical considerations. And so it really is the effort of many. So thank you all for being so receptive and for dealing with such a dry and technical topic. I know it sounds like super boring when I'm like, the standard error of measurement. My, like, teacher voice is very quieting and it's late. So thank you all also for being so receptive to such a really technical nerdy topic. I appreciate all of your time.
You're in good company.
Yeah, I would say.
I know.
It's all good stuff. Well, thank you very much for that. There are some FYI items on this past summer, the recap of summer learning for the past summer that I hope everyone takes a look at. With no other business, I adjourned this meeting at 18:00 PM. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.